Sorry. Without technology like lost.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are live.
Great, thank you. So today is April 21st, 2021, and the time is 5:05 PM, and I am calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council's special virtual meeting. City Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Damian?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Present.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Avila?
Here.
And Mayor Estrada?
Here. Thank you for that, City Clerk. Is there any public communications?
No, Mayor.
Great. At this point, I will move forward from public communications, and I believe we have a study session and a presentation from Baldwin Park Distribution and Device Distribution LLC.
Would you like me to just get started?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay, uh, thank you so much for your time and consideration tonight. You have myself, Tony Kim, I'm the CEO of Stacks, which is a 100% subsidiary owned by a company called The Ease. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with it, so I'll just go over some high level on who we are, and then get into the presentation. Ease was actually founded sometime, uh, 2014, good six, seven years back, and has evolved since. Back then, it was definitely a different atmosphere in the cannabis world, but now it's, um, you know, we're seven, eight years into this now. We represent about 900-plus employees. I think we're nearing closer to 1,000 now, and the largest cannabis employer in the state. So just to kind of delineate, Ease is the tech company that came out, developed a marketplace platform. Stacks is the cannabis entity that was actually started a little over a year ago to augment and to create the vertical aspect of the company into cannabis. We have done over 7 million deliveries to date and have a user base of about 850,000-plus customers. And in the total combined sales of all cannabis in California, we represent about 10% of that total sales. So, uh, you know, well-versed and experienced in cannabis front. We have about 14 depots that are located throughout the state in every major city, spanning from Sacramento all the way down to Sacramento. We, the structure is, you know, we, the previous model was that these distributors, retailers would license the tech platform from Ease. As of last year, with the creation of Stacks, we have gone to more of a vertical strategy where Stacks now operates the cannabis division, as I mentioned, as well as from anything that goes from the brands on the menu to the delivery depots and logistics and distribution of such. And so, uh, over the course of the last couple of years, we've gone and acquired our actual partners and now represent the actual, you know, seed-to-sale model throughout California. Due to our size, uh, you know, and our compliance components to this, as we started becoming actually owner-operated, uh, compliance first for us. We, we have probably, I would, obviously a biased statement, but I'd say we have the top compliance team in the, in the state, made up of lawyers as well as compliance specialists that are very well-versed, not only at the state level, but municipality and municipality. Because of our presence and the size of our company, we have an impact on our communities that and municipalities that we operate in. And so it's been a very, very big pillar of ours to be participants and active in the social equity programs, as well as having a positive influence on the community around us. So one example of such is our Ease Momentum Program. Uh, I'll let Rashad, who will go into later detail in the presentation about such, but it's a program basically to help kickstart a lot of the social equity partners that we have on the menu, as well as the patient partners. Furthermore, understanding our local engagement has an impact. And so, uh, we have been active and made it a, you know, additional pillar of ours to get into the actual local, what's important to the local municipality and local communities around us that we are operating in, with things such as supporter, like patient rights, workforce development programs, definitely local hiring, uh, and really just having organic positive growth of the cannabis components within those sectors. So, move over into the team component to this. A little background about myself. I, prior to coming over to cannabis, about four or five years ago, I spent a good portion of my life, about 18 years, in the fashion industry, doing exactly what I'm doing in the cannabis side, which is developing supply chains and developing private label business for companies like Macy's and Nordstrom's. So, uh, pretty well-versed in this aspect, uh, both in, whether it's in cannabis or fashion, there's a lot of similarities. But as Ease went and committed to the verticalization strategy, brought me over as the CEO to help build this out and really develop this aspect of the business. We've partnered with Sean Seismant. He is the head of Device Distribution, a local Baldwin Park resident and operator, with, you know, decades of actual cannabis experience. So, uh, you know, our spirit of working collectively with the, with local members of the community, that we partnered up with Sean to help develop this opportunity. As I mentioned, our compliance team is second to none, as well as, uh, you know, a very well-rounded, uh, team of government and community affairs members. So, uh, we spend a good amount of our allocation to such, to these components of it, and it's, uh, we realize the importance of all these aspects as we start developing this very nascent industry. The project at hand, uh, you know, we are very interested in establishing our core distribution facility in the city of Baldwin Park. This is a state type 11 license type. We've identified the property and have already committed to such, uh, located at 14030 Live Oak. What we plan on doing there is traditional distribution in the sense of, we, as I mentioned, we have 14 retailer, uh, delivery retail depots throughout the state, and we're looking to put in our centralized distribution center in Baldwin Park, as well as co-packing product storage components. We project, forecast about at scale, uh, maybe about a year into it, that we will scale the employee count, headcount up to about 50-plus. Uh, and the, uh, proposed kind of community fee, the licensing fee, as we've been participating in some of your city council meetings as an annual fee there. Stage two, step two in this, uh, we've had early conversations about the possibility of setting up a delivery facility here in Baldwin Park as well, but understanding that this is the next kind of phase and contemplation from the city council perspective. So, uh, I'll put a pinhole on that, and just to give you guys a little bit of a kind of background, our, a map here where our proposed distribution facility is. We've secured the property back in September of 2020. We did go ahead and apply for the city application in March, and subsequently filed the state application a couple of weeks ago in April. So this is a picture of the building. It is a beautiful, uh, facility that came pretty turnkey to our, to our liking, just, and just kind of a little bit of a macro approach. Currently, with our 14 different retailers throughout the state, we, we are serviced by, uh, 20-plus different distributors, each really more on discretion of the brands themselves, and they deliver to all 14 different locations. So, the hub-and-spoke model that I developed in the fashion industry, using that same model to create a similar structure, infrastructure in the city of Baldwin Park, what, you know, was traditionally known as hub-and-spoke, meaning all the brands would deliver to our centralized location. We would process this, onboard it, and then distribute back out to our, within our own network. This allows for a lot of efficiencies, as well as control over such. Like I said, we, there's a lot of different distributors, and we don't necessarily have control over them. We, we implement SOPs, but, you know, that's their business. What this would ultimately achieve is not, not only a more efficient inventory management component to this, but also allow us, you know, to ensure that we adhere to quality, safety protocols, compliance standards, and allowing our centralized intake, as well as inspection, packaging, and transportations of all our products to our own network. By centralizing our inventory, we're able to increase all of our efficiencies and reduce the headcount and staffing at the retail side and bring it all into the central distribution where, again, it's just easier to manage, but has benefits from the labor standpoint in Baldwin Park. We, as I mentioned, we've identified the facility, uh, started to actually pay rent on that since we did back in October. We've invested quite a bit into setting up the proper utilities, security alarms, construction maintenance, basic TIs. That's, you know, we're holding and pausing as a result of these conversations until we have clear visibility on license, but we'll go into, uh, you know, the caging, the ingress egress components, all it, the security system. And we brought on Mr. Andy Serani, who will talk about the security components later on the presentation. In addition, in the spirit of our partnership with, uh, local Baldwin Park community, the partnership that we have with Sean is allocating 5,500 square feet of the space for him to operate his business, uh, and so a lot of mutual benefits in doing so. So, uh, again, just another example of our commitment to partner and work with the existing, with the existing community. Just to give you an overview, and just kind of alluded to a couple of these points. As you can see on the left here, uh, this is where all our depots are located throughout the state, and our ultimate objective is to eventually scale this, uh, really an arm of our infrastructure to centralize of the logistics component of getting the brands to actual retailers. Baldwin Park is strategically perfect for us in the sense of most of our operational components, uh, staff is located in SoCal, but we have six, seven now, uh, different depots up north. So really, it would be centralizing the transportation components and logistics of SoCal, and then moving product up to the NorCal territories, and then back down again. We've broken this down in three different phases that are also correlated with programs that we intend to hopefully run in conjunction with the city that have positive community impacts. I'll pass it over here right now to introduce Mr. Serani, Andy. He is our head of security, and I'll let him kind of tell a little bit about himself and his background, and his expertise.
Thanks, Tony. I want to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to present along with my CEO today, and Rashad. Obviously, we're all real excited about the Baldwin Park opportunity. Don't want to get too deep into my background. Talking about myself is not one of my strong suits. But I've been doing this for about two decades, and in different verticals. So I started in military and the law enforcement, and transitioned to the corporate world, and been doing this for a couple of different companies now. I've been primarily in highly regulated industries prior to this with data centers, Google and Amazon. So, a very, first foray into cannabis, interesting, interesting vertical for me. And, you know, Ease and Stacks specifically brought me on at the beginning of this year with the investment that they're putting into security, right? So it's one of the, the big, the big pillars for 2021, 2022, and moving forward is increasing our security footprint all over. So, the facility, uh, you know, in Baldwin Park, so we have planned, uh, top to down, uh, top to bottom, full-out security there in every aspect. So we will have 24-hour on, on tight guards. We have a robust interior and exterior CCTV program. You know, the, the state requires 720 by 1280, which is essentially a 1.3 megapixel camera. The lowest megapixels that we use onsite are three, with the majority being five, or even, I believe we have 11 interior 16-megapixel cameras. So, couple that with our onsite central station monitored burglar alarm system, use a local company, MyJack Alarm, uh, to install that, monitor that, and then also to install the rest of our security as well. On top of that, we have an access control system, uh, the manufacturer is Brevo. And then with, we're able to assign, it's just like any of the office buildings you've been in that have bad readers, we're able to assign different access to different personnel dependent on their role. On top of that, we use Envoy as our visitor management system, robust system that allows us to be BCC compliant, and also manage who is onsite and keep logs for the required time. So the last piece is kind of our creme de la creme. So, one of the big initiatives that I brought with me here that has seen great support internally is looking as we scale, looking as we grow our security footprint, the ability to self-monitor, the ability to have our own, uh, our own SOC, so a SOC, so a security operations center. This is going to be the hub of our distribution, and it's the largest facility we have. It's going to be the hub of our security as well. So it's going to be a 24-hour staffed operations control center with highly, highly-trained operators. They'll be monitoring all of our alarms enterprise-wide, all of our cameras, and all of our access control 24/7. They integrate with our business continuity program, their emergency management program. It gives us a really great footprint when, when looking for alarms. We get instant, instant notification, and it's a great difference for us between a third-party alarm monitor company sending, uh, you know, calling law enforcement and saying, "Hey, we have a door alarm here," versus the ability for us actually call law enforcement and say, "Hey, we actually have a burglary, a burglary going on. Here's a description of the individual. It's active right now. Can you respond?" So, uh, thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Andy. Next, and understanding that, um, traffic impact is going to be a critical part to your decision-making here. Just, I put some pictures down. Our team has done some traffic studies. We are, all things considered, there's a relatively small number of deliveries expected going in and out of the facility at any given time. We have our own parking lot, and the entrance is on Live Oak. So, uh, we don't anticipate any local traffic circulation being negatively impacted by the operations and such. We only, initially, we will only be delivering to our own network, so it's only 14 retailers. And expect probably around four to six deliveries on a given, uh, given business day from brands coming in, and three trucks, four trucks going out, maybe twice a week, outback, outbound to our retail, our own retail channel. So, uh, and that's really a full scale in Q1. So, um, we've mapped out our efficiencies and our, and our, kind of our, our schedule and cadence of these trucks going in and out. And because it's centralized, that we don't see this as being a very high-traffic operation for deliveries to the facilities. We have 20 parking spots in a gated lot that will constantly be monitored and have its own security of, of vehicles coming in and out, obviously. And what we've done here is put a little picture. We took a screenshot of a Google Net Traffic Report at 8:30 in the morning on, on a basic workday. And as you can see, it's pretty much green light going through Live Oak. Our property, but we've secured, if you look at the picture on the right, is the one on the bottom that, kind of that beige highlight, uh, the entrance is on Live Oak, so there's no reason for any of our trucks to go anywhere beyond that. There's no ingress egress on Stewart Street or the street to, I believe it's to the north there. Outside, you know, like, pretty much all our trucks will be coming in and out of that parking lot. And the parking lot that, that our secured dedicated spot is that section to the right of the facility. That actually has a gate there with the 20 spots. So, um, there won't be any ingress egress outside of the trucks coming in from Live Oak, going straight into that dedicated parking area. As well, and then on top of the traffic impact, our neighborhood impact, we don't, we don't see any, uh, with our activity there, any circulation issues with emergency access. There, as I mentioned, there's no rhyme or reason why any of our trucks and vans would be on any other street besides Live Oak. And so, uh, taking into consideration the street width and sidewalk provisions, and available parking and traffic peak times, we don't see ourselves having any impact, really, or very minor one, on the neighborhood. Uh, as mentioned, we have our own gated parking, which ensures that cannabis products will never be visible to the public during loading or unloading. It goes in through that secure parking area, and then through our own loading docks into the building. So, um, cannabis products will never be exposed to the public. Mentioned our partnership with Sean, uh, local Baldwin Park resident. And the last component to this, the facilities of ours. In summary, uh, we don't see the facility of operations presenting any negative impacts. But taking that one step further, furthermore, uh, Ease and Stacks is always created and believed in having a positive impact, uh, through different community programs and initiatives. Like, at this point, introduce Rashad Johnson, uh, to talk about some of the programs that we've run before, and we intend to initiate in the city of Baldwin Park.
Thanks, Tony. Uh, thank you, everyone, for your time. I really appreciate it. I think I, to step, take a step back, I think Ease and Stacks approach all communities kind of like, if we're going to be doing business, we'd like to see how we can best serve and best cultivate the correct pipelines to make sure that not only, you know, we're doing good business, but we're also facilitating job opportunities and relationships with the existing communities. From our perspective, Ease has done a lot in relation to social equity in terms of providing and, and identifying small business operators from impacted communities who want to be in the space. And so, uh, to date, we have, uh, given over a million dollars and given folks, I would say, hundreds of hours of kind of support from our, uh, from our corporate entities, making sure their accounting and all things relative to running a business and being sustainable are provided for them. I think, you know, we understand we're standing on the shoulders of a lot of folks who've been negatively impacted by the war on drugs. But more importantly, when it comes to communities, we like to approach it from a, you know, a holistic, private, public partnership. As you guys know, the cannabis industry is growing rapidly in the state, and a lot of folks from communities in and around Los Angeles want to get into it. And we think that we're a great bridge builder in terms of identifying folks and helping them get into the space where they understand the industry and can go out on their own and be sustainable business owners. You know, I think we're, we're more than open for apprenticeship programs. Again, I think we would love to work hand-in-hand with the city to identify efforts you guys are doing for workforce development and kind of connect those docs for you guys, but also from a mentorship program. I think, you know, kids coming out of high school have not traditionally thought about cannabis as a way to get, or cannabis as an industry to get into. But as that develops more and more, I think Ease and Stacks are more than willing to support and mentor folks who want to get into the space, not to mention kind of cultivate a sense of community around, around the existing operators in the city currently. I think Baldwin Park, you know, is obviously a strong community, but more importantly, I think it's an opportunity for all vendors and cannabis businesses alike to work together to make sure that not only they're making the best imprint in Southern California, but hopefully, some of those products and brands can reach out to Northern California and, you know, bring some of that, those winnings back to the city. Um, and so I, I close in saying that Ease is more than willing to support and work with the city to make sure that we have a diverse, inclusive cannabis industry, and also want to make sure that we're a shining star for, uh, future businesses who plan on coming.
Thanks, Rashad. Um, you do have one more slide.
Oh, fantastic. As you guys know, you know, cannabis currently, and unfortunately, still has, you know, some negative stigmas. Uh, and I think the best way for us to do that, to kind of, you know, mitigate those stigmas, is to do, you know, positive outreach, let folks understand how safe and compliant, uh, we are as an operator. But more importantly, uh, to expose to the community some of the great efforts that we're doing in terms of supporting patients, veterans, uh, those who are shut in, those who don't have access to cannabis in their local communities, and really trying to build the bridge. It doesn't say, "Hey, we just want to sell you weed", but we also want to kind of push forward the issues that you see in your community that need more attention or need more advocacy. Of course, we advocate for business sustainability and business operation, but we also advocate for greater good. Uh, and I think as cannabis, cannabis has, is in a position as an industry to really support not just sales of cannabis, but also some of the social issues that we see surrounding kind of cannabis and criminalization. And so from our perspective, we hope as best we can to not only reverse those stigmas, but to provide people with opportunities to thrive in the space and, and, and further some of the positive perspectives that cannabis can provide to communities.
Great. Appreciate that, Rashad. Uh, and just to kind of touch on this, um, you know, to Rashad's point, we, we're a very large company that, you know, does a large amount of volume in the cannabis space. And so we understand fully that there's a lot of responsibility on ourselves to be good operators and players in the space. And so, uh, where we go and penetrate into a new market or territory, to Rashad's point, we have, uh, we're very committed on having a positive organic growth, not only for our company, um, directly, but as well as to the supply chain, our partnerships to the community, uh, to, to everything in that ecosystem around us. We realize that we do have an impact on that and take that responsibility seriously. So in closing, uh, tried to keep this short and sweet, uh, understanding your precious time here. But, you know, partnering with Ease Stacks is, uh, we strongly believe is a, is a significant catalyst to the growth of Baldwin Park's cannabis industry. As we build, we like to build around us. It is critical, in a very nascent industry, that we have strong partners, and so we help facilitate that growth and development of our, of our supply chain partners, our brand partners, uh, as well as our, you know, the municipalities that we operate within. Between taxes, fee revenues, uh, paid to the, paid to the city, as well as the op, uh, job opportunities that we create, we believe that we are a substantial and seller benefit to all local businesses. Uh, and we feel like this is a great opportunity, a win-win situation for Baldwin Park if you guys really take cannabis to the next level. And again, in final notes, uh, we are extremely committed to our relationship with the city of Baldwin Park and like to ensure that we have a positive impact on all fronts. And in summary, uh, we humbly request that, uh, the council expeditiously, hopefully, if that's, uh, you know, quote-unquote, but considering subsequently awards Stacks a distribution license. And in the future, we'd love to have the further conversation about non-storefront delivery licenses as well. That's it for the presentation. Leave it open for any questions that you guys might have for either one of us. Uh, and thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Well, Tony and the team, uh, thank you for that presentation. It was very thorough and informative, and I really appreciated that you touched on different components and, um, you know, the different value add, I guess, that you'll bring if you are approved in our community distributor. Workforce development, I love that. And, you know, the security is so important. So you guys have been very thoughtful about that. The site itself seems like it is ideal, if you ask me, because it's right off of a major thoroughfare and close, very close to the 605. So it, I really appreciate that will have minimal impact to our neighborhoods. I did have some questions about the flow of the product. So, and you mentioned some, some words like co-packaging or co-packing. So I wanted to understand, so tell me if I understand this correctly. You have 14 depots or clients that will deliver product to this site? That's this proposed site? And we could get vehicles from those 14? Did I understand about maybe four or five vehicles per day? And then?
Oh, go ahead.
And then it's, the product is processed on-site and then delivered about three times a week? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Almost. So we actually have 14, uh, non-storefront delivery depots throughout the state. Those are within our own, uh, we are on the license of those 14. We work with about 50 to 75 different brands that are on the menu that will eventually be on the, you know, the virtual, uh, marketplace shelf at those 14, uh, different locations. So, those brands will be delivering to the Baldwin Park facility. And about twice a week, we would have our vans going from our centralized facility to those 14 retail stores.
Ah, okay.
Okay. Uh, and the second part of your question, yes, uh, we also do private label. Like, we also have our own brands. So the co-packing component to this is where, uh, we will be sourcing the different bill of materials that are required for, for the final end product. Uh, and the distribution license from a state, uh, on the state level is that, you know, we're allowed to co-pack, package. So we're not allowed to alter the state of that good, uh, that product, but we can package it into final, final packaging and then, uh, treat it like, uh, you know, a finished product that will go through the basic. but we can package it into final, final packaging and then, uh, treat it like, uh, you know, uh, a finished product that will go through the basic regiment that I described earlier to our fourteen, uh, retail channels.
Are there any odors that come from that process?
Yeah, you know, you know, the, the quantity of such, you know, it's, it's maybe about twenty percent of our menu. Uh, we have a very, the building itself came with a pretty, uh, a comprehensive HVAC system. Uh, and odor components, but that's definitely something that we have, you know, w- we're mindful of. So the, there, the, uh, the ventilation system in the facility, uh, will be customized so that there won't be any odor going outside of the building.
Okay. So, yeah, so some of the processing of the product will require that ventilation system and uh, a mitigation to the neighborhood. Okay. And as far as the, uh, the number of depots, do you expect that that will grow?
Yeah, I mean, uh, absolutely. We hope so. Uh, that is definitely the intent. Uh, just to give you a little context, uh, we also just launched in Michigan. Uh, we're putting some groundwork down in Colorado and Florida. Uh, we're hoping to launch those by, uh, the end of the year, but in California alone, yes, uh, we've gone from, uh, I think it was twelve to like fifteen in the last three months or so. So there's a couple new, uh, delivery depots that we're looking for. Ultimately, you know, we would like to cover the entire state in the most efficient um, way. And so we do a lot of studies, uh, and analytics on what's the most efficient locations to have uh, retail, uh, depots. Uh, San Gabriel Valley is definitely one of those spaces that we would love to put a retail store on. And when I say what retail store, this is just to make sure this is non-storefront delivery. So there's no actual foot traffic. These are just delivery depot hubs, uh, that our drivers go out and facilitate direct to consumer orders.
Okay. So that leads to my next question of the vehicles that will be coming in and out of the site. And like I said, I think the site really does lend itself to traffic and circulation, in- ingress, egress, uh, proximity to the freeway. So I think all of that is good. And my question is, the vehicles that will be coming in and out, can you tell me what they look like as far as the size?
Yeah, a- a- and, uh, Council Garcia, just to be absolutely clear, this, this, uh, this facility that we're looking at right now is purely for, uh, our distribution center. It is not the actual facility that goes direct to consumer. So the description of the vehicles are these Sprinter vans and box trucks. So you, what you traditionally would like think about when you're talking about, uh, uh, like a freight, you know, the Sprinter vans are, how do I describe a Sprinter van? Um, you know, just kind of like your, your, your white van, uh, that are especially customized.
The Amazon delivery.
Yes, yes. That's perfect. It's like those Amazon vans that you see. Uh, we do not have signage on these vans, uh, and there's compliance rules from the BCC of the security, the tracking, uh, those components to that. So, um, yeah, that's the extent of, 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 of the actual vehicles that will be coming in and out of the, uh, distribution facility.
Okay. And so your, your vehicles are also those Sprinter vans? Oh, okay. And then, um, just one more question that I have on the vehicles is the security are, do those have security? Do yours, as they go out to the fourteen depots?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Yeah, these, these vans, uh, are, again, there's compliance rules and regulations around what needs to be on these vans. Um, there, there's now a whole sector now that's, you know, customizing these vans to meet those compliance regulations. So we are basically like little armored vehicles that are going around. Uh, and again, there's tracking and, and protocols around these vans on the, uh, where these vans are allowed to go and how they're supposed to be ingressing and onboarding and offboarding at, uh, cannabis licensed facilities.
Uh huh. Okay. And then finally, I've seen your billboard off the ten freeway near like, let's say, Los Angeles Avenue or Santa Fe.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it looks good. Do you guys have a facility in that area?
No, um, no, we do not. Uh, so currently this is, uh, definitely, uh, a space that we'd like to address. Uh, we do have, um, facilities on the eastern side of Los Angeles greater. Uh, so our, our, you know, our delivery, and this is on the depot side. So the drivers on the depot sides are making trips out there. Uh, obviously it's not the most efficient place, uh, the, the, uh, the distance that these drivers have to travel to service, uh, S T V is not efficient for us, but we'd like to service the area. Uh, so having a, you know, a non-storefront delivery somewhere in Baldwin Park will be an ideal location for us.
Well, thank you for that information. And like I said, I think that I, the, I, the location, excuse me, is ideal. Um, and if you can ensure that, uh, no odors will reach those neighborhoods, you know, especially being that you're closer to the neighborhoods than, I think, than what we allow. But you would have my support, um, if you could just ensure that that odor is mitigated so that it doesn't impact the residential neighborhoods.
Absolutely. Um, we can present kind of, uh, the odor mitigation plan, um, to you, uh, down the road. Um, but uh, like I said, the, the quantity of actually unpacked flour is going to be nominal. So, uh, you know, we, we don't foresee it. It's a forty-five thousand square foot facility with very thick walls. And as I mentioned, the HVAC kind of system is pretty state of the art. The landlord did a fantastic job with that. So we don't foresee that as being an issue and we're taking all the necessary precautions to make sure that it's not.
All right. Thank you.
Great. Does any other, uh, council member have any questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I've got a couple of questions, if I may.
Go ahead, Councilmember Damian.
So, uh, Tony, I've got a question. You mentioned, uh, your security, which I was impressed with the security that you have in the twenty-four seven. Now, you mentioned about security guards. How many security guards at one point in time will you be having?
Let Amy answer that question.
Yeah, sure. I can take that. Uh, so during the day shifts, we have two different aspects to it. We have, uh, the same security guard uh, company services both the SOC, the Security Operations Center, and the onsite guards who are dedicated to the facility. So during the day, we have two dedicated security guards to the facility during the two different day shifts, uh, and one at night. And then we also have a twenty-four seven, uh, dedicated body to the SOC as well. We will also have an account manager there for that security, uh, company during the day. So the most you'll see at one time for the one facility is four, uh, and then minimum on two.
And would these be armed guards or unarmed?
Uh, right now we have specs for.
For what? I'm sorry?
We have, we have quotes for armed currently is, is our plan.
And then, uh, how many employees do we anticipate that you would be hiring from our community?
Well, we're focusing out, it would look like, well, total employees that we forecast out at full scale is in the distribution center is around fifty. Um, again, we love to do our job fairs and, uh, work development programs, uh, the more, the better. Uh, we love to hire with locally. Uh, so there is a, a set number that we'd say specifically coming from Baldwin Park, but definitely would love to engage with whatever programs that you have, as well as initiate some of our arms to hire, to hire locally.
Then my last question is, you said you guys would have probably anywhere between four to six deliveries at one point in time during the day. So you would not be using steward at all, correct? You would only be using the live oak area?
Correct. Um, and then as you see, uh, uh, Mr. Danny, the, from the ingress of that, um, component, if I can put it back up, but the ingress, egress to this business facility, the, 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 uh, the park basically is coming through live oak. And then we have our own designated private parking with a gate that allows us to do a security check there. And the, the, uh, the vans would be coming into our, you know, secluded area. And then we have loading dock doors within that area so that those vans can go inside and park, you know, back into the building. So those products will never be exposed to, to the public.
Got it. And they would be, they would be in a direction that they would never be going in or out of the steward area, right?
No, they're big. Uh, honestly, we love the location for a litany of different reasons, but one of them is the proximity to the six oh five freeway. Uh, they would come right in, right out of there, uh, from live oak. There's no reason whatsoever for us to go anywhere beyond that.
And then my last question, as you mentioned, you started paying, I believe you've already paid about over four hundred thousand dollars in rent, so forth and so on. Now, you mentioned you, you obtained the lease for this building back in October of twenty twenty.
Correct. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
And when did you, so you applied for that lease in October of twenty twenty? And when did you apply for the distribution license?
So, uh, we, we have a very favorable situation with the landlord. Uh, we have an option on the, so for us to commit to that lease and the property, you want it, we wanted to lock it down as we went through this process. So we have an option on that lease with the landlord. So we are paying month to month on this, uh, with the option to get out of the lease if by, you know, knock on wood, but if something should, uh, if we're not able to obtain the license.
Uh huh. Got it. And so when did you, so when did you actually apply for the distribution license with the city of Baldwin Park?
I believe it was March.
March of this year.
Correct.
Thank, that's all the questions that I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. So, uh, I think my own concern is that that location is pretty close to the residential area. So have you guys maybe even thought about going around that area and just trying to figure out how that, how those residents feel? And maybe just trying to get, you know, potential buy-in from the, from the, from your, from your residential neighbors?
To be honest, Mayor, we have not. Uh, we've been more than happy to do, uh, a neighborhood survey.
Okay. Just because I know that there's, they're right, I think, over the wall, right? So of course we don't want to, you know, do all of this. None, none of them are aware of it. And then, you know, they're gonna eventually, you know, find out. So just, uh, at least in the, for the sake of transparency with the, with the constituents.
Sure.
Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, yes, Mayor, please.
This is for Ben. Uh, and what are the setbacks in that location?
The, the setbacks for distribution in general, that location are, are fifty feet.
And that location, uh,
It's less. Yeah, that, for that particular location, it's less to the residential. Um, we don't have the exact footage, but it's about, I think roughly about half, like twenty-five feet.
So, but normally it's fifty feet for everybody else. In this particular location is only twenty-five from residential, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much, Tony and team, for being here. Uh, you know, a lot of my colleagues have, uh, you know, already expressed a lot of the concerns and questions that I would have asked. Um, you know, one of the big ones, uh, you know, is obviously the, the traffic flow, you've already addressed that. Um, same with the potential smell, uh, you know, given the size of the facility and the proportion of, you know, what you actually might be doing in-house, um, seems nominal. Uh, you know, considering the, the, uh, you know, the agreement of, you know, of making sure that that wouldn't be the case. Cause you know, I'm, uh, I think myself and even Mr., uh, come with your other colleagues here, uh, might be quite aware of the Sriracha debacle that happened, you know, a few years back, right? Um, and, you know, speaking to what, uh, the, uh, Mayor Estrada also mentioned of, you know, making at least, making the, the neighbors aware of, you know, what's, what potentially may happen. Uh, I think it's a good thing. Um, but the one thing I would say is, you know, given everything that you guys have talked about, you know, I'm, I'm generally in support of, you know, this facility, because in my view is, you know, if anybody else was bringing in or distributing something else that's by rights under the state, uh, nobody would have to go through this type of presentation whatsoever with the city. Um, they would be able to sign their lease and go in there and bring in smelly products, whatever that might be. Um, and the city would have, uh, very little, uh, course of action to deal with them to some extent, of course. Um, however that said, uh, you know, giving the flexibility and the, you know, the actual openness that you're trying and, you know, from what I've seen and speaking with your colleagues, um, and trying to be a good partner, not only for us, uh, the city, but the residents, but also, uh, developing that next level of investment of workforce development. Uh, you know, providing opportunities for folks to really get into this industry that, you know, I understand, you know, the, the good nature, but I also understand the business side of it of, you know, them potentially being, you know, one of your customers or somebody on your platform, which is not a problem, you know, Amazon does it. Uh, so it's, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not a bad thing to do. Um, so I certainly do appreciate that, uh, you know, in the sense of the setback, given, you know, what you've talked about. Um, I'm not too concerned with that particularly for this location. Um, I do see the value of this, you know, not only you, uh, and your company also kind of, you know, be the catalyst uh, for us to kick off this, you know, this industry or this type of industry, uh, in our city and to bring in other folks, not, that's something you would like necessarily, but competitors into Baldwin Park. Um, to be able to do this type of similar services for the rest of Southern California or San Gabriel Valley, whatever the case may be. Um, and more importantly, uh, I want to be able to, you know, use this as an example, um, to the cannabis industry and to other cities of looking at ways of being, you know, in partnership with a true P P E, right? Uh, to illustrate, you know, what can be done when we, you know, when we work collaboratively on the front end um, together to show, you know, what can be done, right? Um, as Councilmember, uh, Damian spoke to, you know, the workforce envelop, development, hiring folks, you know, but more importantly, for me, you know, the hiring part is one, is, is important too, but providing the pathway and the roadmap for others to enter this new industry, uh, specifically an industry or a, um, sector that has criminalized, uh, you know, people of color, you know, in the past. Uh, but provide those individuals now an opportunity to be entrepreneurs and to be small business, uh, successful business folks. Um, I see great value in that. Um, and it's one of the things that, you know, really, um, brings me, uh, to supporting, you know, this, you know, your company in this facility. Uh, because I don't think there are others that would step up in that, in that sense, to provide those opportunities. And I will, I will assure you, you know, should you, uh, receive the approval from the council, um, I will be very much on your doorstep. Um, and I think the rest of my colleagues would be uh, making sure that we do provide those workforce, uh, development opportunities, the mentoring programs and so forth. And, you know, having, uh, those ongo- ongoing conversations, you know, through our staff with, uh, Mr. Martinez, uh, to see, you know, what we're actually doing, you know, what are the K P I's, you know, how many folks are we bringing in from San Gabriel Valley? Not just Baldwin Park, but San Gabriel Valley as a whole. Um, and, you know, we have a college uh, over just on the other side of Ramona that has a very good, um, agricultural college. Um, and you now know, uh, some of these, you know, in, uh, and along with, I think, Mount SAC, um, are now looking at perhaps curriculums in and around the cannabis industry. Um, so they're now recognizing the potential of what this could be, um, for, you know, a different industry than what people would normally think of. Uh, you know, uh, growing apples, growing wine and grapes and so forth. So, uh, I'm very much interested uh, seeing if we could expand on that, um, and perhaps, you know, providing, uh, you know, call it a, a center of excellence, you know, here in Baldwin Park, uh, where we can do something like that on a micro level. Uh, to be able to have, you know, a, a small group of cohorts go through something like that. Um, where then we can then showcase, you know, the success of, of, of them um, for accomplishing and starting their business and, you know, growing from there. So with that, thank you for the presentation. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Hernandez, if you don't mind me addressing a couple of the comments that you made, and there was a lot of great insightful, uh, points that you, uh, highlighted here. One in, uh, the odor in cannabis is not a new thing. Uh, you know, we have gotten very good at, uh, using ion scrubbers and, you know, uh, filters. Uh, this is something that has been common, uh, a common concern from a lot of people, from a lot of municipalities. So this is something that we, the industry in general has gotten very, very good at. And so, uh, understanding that this is, uh, always going to be a concern from any location, uh, we do have uh, the, the methods to, to mitigate that. Uh, two, to your second point about, uh, the overall industry, we welcome it. We'd love for the, the uh, supply chain partners and the brand partners to all be successful. We consider ourselves, and this may be a little bit self-proclaimed, but we, you know, uh, we, we're not scared of competition. We are by far the largest direct-to-consumer platform. Uh, there, there really is a couple distant seconds, but we are the only statewide direct-to-consumer platform and we're really a marketplace. So for us, the stronger the brands and the supply chain partners become and the overall industry gets stronger, that's that just bodes better for us, uh, overall in our long-term vision. And lastly, to your commitment to, uh, the community impact, uh, our government affairs and our community impact teams are gonna love hearing what you have to say. The fact that you come onto our doorstep will make them happier than ever. Uh, we have a lot of great ideas of, uh, programs that we have run in the past as well as what we'd love to bring to Baldwin Park. And again, to the same spirit, you know, the stronger the community is around us, uh, the stronger that we are and, you know, it's creating win-wins. Uh, it's not lost on anybody over at the East Act side. Uh, we are advocates, understand the history and the disproportionate impact on, in the war on drugs that had on POC. So as a born, you know, native Los, uh, Angelino, uh, I've been in that struggle and in that fight and committed a good portion of my life to such, as well as some of our members and on the executive team here at East Act. So this is like teaching classes, mentorship programs. Does, we love those, uh, concepts and those programs and will, you know, be the first to, uh, not only help develop them with the city of Baldwin Park, but, you know, be an active participant as such.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Tony, thank you for addressing the concerns about any odors and I do recognize that this is a new building and so, you know, I can understand what you're saying about having a more modern HVAC system, plus the mitigation, um, that you, I'm sure, install, like you said, the scrubbers and everything that you go through. Um, and as long as that can be addressed, which it sounds like it can be, like I said, you have my support. Every property that we look at for cannabis is gonna have its pros and cons. And in this case, your site is, like I said, off of a major thoroughfare, live oak, Aro Highway, proximity to the freeway. There shouldn't be any direct impact as far as vehicle, um, circulation to the neighborhood, the residential neighborhoods. And I like that because there are some properties that met the criteria. But, you know, they may be a little bit closer in, in, inside our, our community and so, you know, we're gonna feel their impact more. So I just wanna share that because every property that we look at is gonna have its pros and cons and there are a lot of good things about this site. It's a new building too and I like that. Um, it's also next to waste management, you know, so it's already kind of an industrial area, light industrial that lends itself. And so, you know, we, we, we do need to look at that and as it is, one of the challenges that operators brought to us early on in this process is the ability to find a site. And it's already restricted. We restricted it because we didn't want the, the major impacts to our community. We want the benefits of the industry, but of course we don't want the im, the negative impacts, right? So we restricted where these operators, um, could be cited and where their, uh, where their pro, um, companies could be approved and permitted. And so that limits us and so I, I can appreciate that you were proactive in trying to secure a site while you try to get the approvals from the city and that's really no different than what other operators were doing early on in the process because they wanted to, you know, participate and without a site, you can't participate really. Um, you can't seek a, a city permit if you don't have a site, in other words. But, um, all that just to say that, you know, I'm looking at it from a land use perspective. I'm looking at it from a planning perspective, community development. Um, I like the workforce development opportunities. I like the security. You guys have been very thoughtful. Uh, I like that you come to the city with a lot of experience. You know, we stand to gain a good amount of revenues from this operation. The site is strong in so many ways. And as long as that odor can, can be mitigated, like I said, you'll have my support.
So, um, Ben, how many operators do we currently have?
We have currently fifteen, Ma- Mayor.
And, and I think all of them are following that sixty-foot setback, right?
Correct. We have, I, I would say, yeah, approximately fifteen. Vast majority follow the fifty-foot setback. We do have one operator that's brand new, the six Vland, the distinct indulgence, they have a lesser, um, a setback that was approved for their, their particular use.
Great.
But besides that, vast majority follow the setback.
Thank you. So my biggest concern is that we've forced fifteen operators to follow that setback. And now we are going to, you know, make certain amendments or special arrangements for one distributor. And so if you've been following what's been going on in the news and around the city, you know that there is a lot of commotion going on. And so making some sort of special amendment at this point would look really bad on our part. I think it's, um, I think it's been kind of an open, an open document to be able to see the requirements for such a facility. Um, you know, I, I, that's my biggest concern and I, and I just kinda have to air that out there. I think, uh, that's one of the biggest concerns for, uh, certain members of this, uh, council. And I think that's something that has to be deliberated and, and really thoroughly discussed.
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
Um, we can go Councilmember Damian and then Councilmember Hernandez.
Absolutely.
I, I thank you, Mayor. And so I, I absolutely agree with Councilmember Garcia with a lot of the things that she mentioned. Uh, you know, I'm impressed with the facility. I'm impressed with the experience that you guys have. I have nothing against, you know, you guys coming into the city. My concern is again, the residential, how close you are. I mean, literally you have, have a neighbor who's, who's a resident there. So, you know, I think that right now you're about twenty-three feet away from the residence when we should be at fifty feet. I live right down the street from there, right behind Waste Management. And one of my concerns as a resident in that area is number one, like Councilmember Garcia mentioned, the odor, right? Are, are we gonna be able to mitigate the odor? Number two, if we do make this exception now, are we gonna have to go and do these other exceptions for anybody else who wants to come into the city? I also have a concern that we just literally started accepting distribution licenses because we had one exclusive distributor in the city and we just literally got rid of that exclusivity. And you guys obtained this building in October of twenty twenty and yet applied for your, for this particular permit last month in March. That concerns me as well. So, um, I would really love to support this project, but I would really like for you guys to out, go out and do your community outreach and reach out to all of the surrounding neighbors in there and get feedback as to what it is that they feel coming there. Because if we are gonna have to do some type of code amendment, then we need to make sure that we get the input from all of those residents in that area that are gonna be impacted by whatever impact they may feel. We, we need to get their feedback before we can even, before I can even say, yes, let's move forward with this project. So I would encourage, like the mayor said, do community outreach, get out there and reach out to all of us residents that live in that area. And let's get, you know, information and feedback from the residents and see how they feel about this type of facility coming in. That would allow for me to make my decision, but right now it's really hard for me to support it under these conditions, even though, um, I love the facility, I love the company. You know, everything seems great about it, but I do have my concerns at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, and I believe Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Um, and just for full transparency, as you mentioned earlier in your comments, uh, the difference between uh, the distribution, that, you know, what we're talking about to, today and the fifteen that you mentioned is they do manuf, they do manufacturing, packaging and they grow. Uh, that is a distinctive difference and we need to make sure that we're honest, you know, when we're talking to the community um, about that and, you know, cause there are differences. Um, you know, I've been to, uh, several of the facilities here in Baldwin Park and other locations. Um, and there is absolutely, there is a distinctive, uh, you could, you could smell, uh, versus someone who does distribution only. And I've been to those facilities. So I just think we have to just make, you know, just for tru, for true transparency, when we talk about the numbers, uh, the setbacks and everything else, you know, there is a difference between manufacturing, growing, uh, versus a strictly a place that's just distributing and housing product. And that's what we're talking about today. Um, you know, I value all the concerns uh, and, you know, the recommendations, uh, that both you and Councilmember, uh, Damian have suggested. And, you know, I look forward to seeing, uh, you know, what we discuss further ourselves, but also, you know, the work that, uh, Mr. Kim will do, uh, given some of the guidance that we've provided tonight.
Yeah, and so, um, uh, yeah, go ahead, Mayor protest.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. It was a very nice presentation, a very nice facility, very well organized, very business oriented. Um, I, I, I'm listening to everybody and, and I agree, maybe we should continue having conversations uh, to see where we're at in this, uh, as a council. We need to address the concerns of the community. Community outreach is very important for sure. So I, I see, I recommend you do that, uh, see what the community has to say. Uh, but it, did I hear that Sean, you are going to be partnering with them and aren't you a grower? So you would be growing there, correct?
No, I, I, I am a, a member of Cultivate Group, which is a licensed manufacturer in the facility, but that is not at that location. And there would not be any, that use of the facility.
So you will not be growing at that facility?
No, no, not at all.
So I misunderstood. Okay. I just wanted to clarify, but again, you know, great presentation, um, but I, I do wanna discuss this further and get to listen to our residents, uh, as Councilmember Damian said, he also lives in the area. So I would like to hear what they have to say since the setbacks are half of what is required. And it is a different facility, you're right, Mr. Hernandez, but I, I would like to hear what our residents have to say about the facility being so close to them. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. And so my concern is not the type of facility that I did, but my concern is that there is more value in this facility than there would, than there would be in a growing house, right? So I would, I would assume, and if I'm wrong, then I'm wrong, but, you know, a pound of, of finished product, edibles, uh, vapes, cartridges, uh, whatever it may be is, is much more valuable than a pound of plant, right? Because it's already finished, there's more density in there, there's more product in there. It's, it's easier probably to, you know, it's gonna be a more attractive product. So we wanna make sure that, of course, we're not endangering any of our constituents. I wanna make sure that we have buy-in from that area, from those, uh, from those residents. I also, I also wanna make sure that, uh, our chief and our police department are involved in that process so that they feel safe, right? So at the end of the day, if, uh, you know, something were to happen, of course, we don't want that to, but if something were to happen, it's gonna be our police that are gonna be responding to that and they need to be feel comfortable with the situation. So, you know, I am a big supporter. I, I, I fully support opening up our distribution and looking into, and, and looking into, uh, delivery. You know, I, I agree with you on the equity part, you know. Cannabis has hurt families that, that look like you and me, families that live in this area, this community and this city and, and all of the valley. And so, you know, now that we have a, an, an ability to, to, uh, to legalize it and, and make revenue off of it, we should, we should be working, looking at how this is gonna benefit our community, right? What resources we can bring in, what programs we can bring in besides jobs, what uh, recreational activities we can bring for the youth so that working-class families no longer have socioeconomic barriers to, to living a better life and, and gaining better skills, right? And so I agree on all of you. I agree with all of you on all of that. But I just wanna make sure that we are able to really stand by our decision when we make this decision. So, you know, I'm all for it. I just want you to do your due diligence and of course make sure that our staff is involved and as I said, our chief and our, and our police departments, that they feel comfortable, you know, when they have to make a response to this call.
Sure. Uh, and, and if I ca, if I may, address two points that you just brought up there, uh, from a security standpoint. Uh, this is gonna be our centralized distribution center. So yes, the value of the product that's inside this facility is obviously very valuable to us, not only from the cost of it, but just from the entire network. So uh, our intent with this and it, it is of utmost importance that this is Fort Knox for us, the security, what we're willing to commit, uh, going to commit to making sure that, uh, this is as secure of a facility as possible, coupled with, uh, you know, the, the BCC compliance components to this. Not only will the facility itself be, uh, have a very comprehensive security system, but once you get inside as well, all product gets locked into DEA cages. So that there's this extra added component, they will have their issues getting into this facility. And even if they did, they will have another layer of having to actually try to get some product out. Uh, the second point that, uh, I wanted to address is on the community, uh, survey. Uh, is there a neighborhood council or what would be the traditional, uh, you know, uh, methodology of doing the neighborhood uh, survey?
There is no neighborhood council, so I think you might just have to reach out to the area. I don't know, Shannon, do you have any ideas on how that can be accomplished?
Um, yeah, Ben can comment this on, uh, a little bit more, but he has helped developers, um, you know, they can send out mailers, we can, um, help them host a town hall meeting, uh, we can send out postcards as a various options um, that we have available.
All right, we just had direct, direct contact, walking the neighborhood and knocking, knocking on doors, but all the, all the above.
Okay, appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Damian.
I think that, uh, maybe like a, a virtual, kind of like a town hall or something would be great. That way you can actually get people who would be willing to ask questions and give feedback. Now, I, I understand, Mr. Kim, that you guys are already paying and I, and I take that into consideration. So Ben, if we can move on this as soon as possible, that way we can get that community outreach out there ASAP. And maybe hopefully we can, I know I'm, I'm probably pushing it, but maybe hopefully we can bring it back at the next council meeting, two weeks from today. Um, I don't know, Ben, Shannon, if that's doable with the timeline, but uh, just, just a sense of urgency, because I understand that they're, they're paying month to month. That way we get the, the community feedback as soon as possible. And then that way we can go ahead and proceed to make the decision because I would hate to, you know, I also put myself in their situation and I would hate to prolong it for them, uh, longer. So let's just kind of get all of our ducks in a row and bring back all that feedback. Let's get that community outreach as soon as possible. That way we can bring it back as soon as we can.
We can. I think that's, um, definitely possible. We would, um, ask the operator to do the legwork, the mailings and that type of thing. And, you know, we could host it, um, at one of our facilities. I guess it's gonna be virtual, but we could host it through Zoom and provide that information.
And then I believe you've already hit your first, uh, your first neighbor right here, right? Councilmember Damian.
What, I'm sorry?
I said, they've already hit, they've already hit their first neighbor, you, right?
Yeah, I was the first resident to get feedback, so.
So one down, like maybe fifty to go, so you're good. You're on a good start.
We're, we're, we're hoping to have your support there.
Of course. So, you know, as long as the, the process is transparent, as long as we, you know, let the community know what's going on and and buy-in, you know, of course, it's, it's just a matter of being, you know, informative and, and, and really getting that community buy-in from that area.
Sure.
Yeah, if I may, I look forward to meeting a few more of the neighbors. So that's, that's something we can get on really quickly.
Good, good.
Yeah, with, with Sean here, we have two down.
There you go, two. And the weather, the weather is in your favor right now, so you're good. Take advantage of it.
Definitely.
Good, good. Okay, so councilmembers, any more questions or concerns? No? So I, I believe at this point, uh, we're gonna move on. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being informative. Thank you for, uh, the discussion. I think, uh, council really appreciates them. Of course, we'll continue discussions and go fro, go on from there.
Thank you for your common consideration.
Yes, thank you, thank you. So I, I believe at this point, uh, we will move on to, uh, closed session. So I will see the rest of the council in the next Zoom meeting.